No.
I always get stuff from Joe.
I went to FerndaleMI.gov for you.
Yeah, but he resented it to me.
How are ya?
To my Gmail. And I'm like, yeah. I was wondering if your Gmail was working okay?
Yep. Booming in Ferndale. Let me make sure that is... Ah. That's yours, I think. I think. Is that mine? Maybe it's mine.
I bet you're good at reading.
Yeah, I do. I'll read that. We're stupid. We're stupid, but she doesn't know how to use an email. So she handwrites and letters.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thought you can't read.
That I can't read, and I don't want to anyway.
It's pretty quick on the list. Hopefully by the time we get there, it'll come right.
And April, Lloyd, so you're gonna do her.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I got it.
Gotcha.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, February the 10th, 2014. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Cheryl Lynn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Eric.
Polica.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. We have a quorum. In fact, we have a full house this evening. Next order of business would be the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
You know what? I should interject that I would like to add a presentation. I guess we'll call it DPW Snow Update, just to sort of...
You mean, snow removal?
Snow removal update. That's correct. So I'd like to add that as Presentation B.
I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All right. Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Is there any discussion? If not, Cheryl Lynn, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yeah, here. Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polica.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. So moving on to presentations, our first presentation this evening is the Downtown Development Authority. And Chris Hughes, you're going to do that presentation for us this evening?
I am indeed, and I'm going to direct your attention to the screen, because some other people can say it better than I can, and we're gonna get that rolling.
Cool.
It's in your gut, the moment you know you've got it.
While the commercial's gone, I will... I'm going to thank Marnie McGrath for getting this set up for us. We pulled this off of WDIV, who came out to Ferndale on Friday night and did a story on the great things that are happening here.
The city of downtown Ferndale seems to be paying off. More than two dozen new businesses opened up in Ferndale in 2013.
Been the happening place for some time, and that is adding up to hundreds of jobs. Lauren Podell takes us through some of the booming businesses.
The Downtown Development Authority here in Ferndale, they're proud of what's been happening the past year. We're talking new office spaces, over 30 new businesses, and that means 300 new jobs. Let's give you a tour.
Hey, nah, see ya. Let's go.
So we're taking you out of the cold and inside to TV Fitness, a personal training gym that's only been open for two years, and take a look at some of them in action.
That's it. Quick, go.
But one of Ferndale's newest businesses is called Organico. They've actually teamed up with TV Fitness, and they've only been around, forget this, three months.
I can tell you countless times, clients have come in and said, you know, "We love that you're here. We've been looking for something like this in Ferndale." And, you know, you hope to hear that when you're a new business.
And when the Downtown Development Authority said businesses are investing in their city, well, they weren't kidding. Wanna have an art party? Inspiration Uncorked, brand new, in the same plaza logo copy center they just opened. And right next door, we came into Pet and Paw, a boutique that's only been open for one year.
That Ali said.
Oh, good. Baby, what is this yelling?
When I decided that I had outgrown my home office, where did I want to look? I knew I needed to keep the business in Ferndale. And so we have Pet and Paw here on Woodward, all organic, holistic, all the foods made in the U.S.
And whether her employees are selling products or walking dogs, Kristen has helped put 11 people to work here in Ferndale, and that's something the DDA is proud of. If you want the full list of new businesses that have opened here in the last year, go to our website, click on Detroit.com. Lauren Podell, Local 4.
So that's a pretty good lead-in to a story on our 2013 statistics. We were happy to have Channel 4 come out and validate what we've been saying. As we continue down that path of bragging, sorry, we brag on behalf of the entire city and our entire business district, but we want to report that we had more than $5 million in private and public sector investments in 2013, which gives us more than $20 million over the past dozen years in public and private reinvestment in our downtown district, which is pretty much phenomenal. But, as she said in the story, that's 30-plus new businesses, 300 new jobs, 15 building rehabs. The DDA provided $25,000 in build funds to three different businesses in the last year, Mag Art on Woodward, the Honey Baked Ham Sprint Plaza, looks all new and shiny, and M1 M Brew on this... Excuse me, on Duster Street. The new businesses are all over town. It's on our website. I'd love to share every last name of them, but we can't do exactly that. But there are all kinds of new businesses, and there's more new businesses to come. Now, usually, when you have new businesses, because some have gone out. So we don't panic when we have an exit. We look at that opportunity and say, who could we get in here that's going to add to our business mix and bring more business to our downtown and all the businesses that are already there and get that synergy going? Fortunately, we have a lot more online that are coming our way soon. The Shops of Ferndale, which is going up as we speak. Cicretto, the cigar bar, that project is finally moving forward. Zeke's Barbecue, they're working on the interior there, and something's gonna happen there. Elegance by Design, the old elegance is proceeding to redo the building and get ready to reopen on the north side of West 9, while their old space is being rehabbed to be another couple new businesses on the south side of West 9. So we have lots of new businesses that are coming to town. As the DDA, we rescanned our website, we updated and increased our social media, we continue to advertise the district through a variety of platforms, from print to radio, and we do digital billboards on I-75 or other places as they become available. But for at least five weeks, commuters all over Metro Detroit region have learned something about downtown Ferndale, whether they're gonna come here for an event or a specific shopping experience. Along with the rest of the world, our budget continues to shrink even as our needs expand. So as an organization, we have put a lot of effort into fundraising. And last year, we added five new events to our docket and raised a little over $40,000 in doing that. We also supported more than 10 third-party events that use downtown Ferndale as their venue, and organized another 16 DDA signature and promotional events from our springtime Art Town Party fundraiser to the Outdoor Movies Get Real, which we're gonna continue this year, and we got some really fun stuff planned for that, to the new Holiday Hoof event, Holiday Ice, lots of great things that promotes foot traffic and brings our residents to town and brings our friends and neighbors to town. So that's all part of what we do. We are especially proud of our efforts to be good partners. We think we're good partners with the city, so thank you very much. Without you, and because of this partnership, we have a beautiful new streetscape on West 9 Mile that figures into our overall statistics, and that is already producing results in terms of redevelopment. Can't say who, but we've got leases online for a couple buildings downtown, and that's exactly what we predicted would happen, and, boy, it's fun to be right. We also have also been able to approach multimodal improvements. We've added four more on-street bike racks and put Sherrill's down West 9 from Pinecrest to Troy and Troy to Woodward. On March 7th, planners from all over are going to gather in downtown Ferndale, which has been kind of set up as an example of how to do something interesting in an interesting town. And so they've been invited to attend a semi-conference of sorts at the Rust Belt Market. As we mentioned before, we have secured, but I'm gonna keep playing on this one, we secured the welcoming party, first-ever welcoming party for the National Main Street Conference that will be coming to Detroit on May 17th through the 23rd, I believe it is. And we will have the welcoming party here in downtown Ferndale on May 17th, because we are a great American Main Street, and we continue to build on the assets that we own. So we're very proud of all these things. Again, we thank the city with our... very much for being partners with us, and we hope that we are good partners with you. We continue to promote everything that we can. And then finally, on March 31st, we will be honoring many businesses. We had to change this date. We'll be honoring the many businesses and volunteers who have helped make downtown Ferndale such a great place.
Chris, I'm sorry, the date again?
March 31st.
Not the 3rd?
Not the 3rd, because you guys have something going. So we moved ours to the 31st, and we will soon have an opportunity for everybody to weigh in online, who their favorite business was and best outside improvements and all that, and to honor just a few of the many volunteers we had last year who put in a total of more than 9,000 volunteer hours making their downtown better. So if anybody out there is interested in volunteering, we will take you on. Thank you very much. That's the report from the DDA. As always, you can get the latest and greatest at DowntownFerndale.com or on our Facebook page.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Chris, I actually have a question.
Uh-oh.
Chris?
Sure, the new guy.
If I may. Yeah, of course. The development, the Shops on Woodward, how many units are there in that facility?
Ah, it's not my department.
Okay.
I think there's six at least.
I'm looking for Derek. He would know. I believe it's...
I am not totally sure, and I'm sorry. I will give you an answer, though.
Okay. And I was wondering if you knew what businesses were planned to move in there, if you can share that?
We've heard of relocation from our current business over there. We don't have privy to what leases have been signed or what they're negotiating with, but a couple of food-related businesses, possibly a hair business of some sort.
Okay.
Don't know totally.
Understand. Thank you.
Wish me good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thanks, Chris. Thanks for all the great work. I see Mike Henness, the board chair of the DDA, and also the owner of wonderful House Bayou. Mike, thanks for all your hard work at the DDA this year. You guys had a lot of great accomplishments, and we appreciate it. Good to see ya. All right. Next presentation would be, I guess what we're calling this, Snow/DPW/What the Heck's Going On With Plowing the Streets, etc. So April, do you want to take that item?
I will, and actually, I'm gonna ask if Chief Collins has anything to add, or Chief Sullivan is part of this. Feel free to come to the podium. Lloyd unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, so... But we've all been living and breathing this together, so I wish he could be here to get some of the kudos. So I just wanted to talk a little bit more about what's going on with snow emergency, what's going on with our salt, just kind of an overview of this unusual winter that we've had here in Michigan. You'll note here that... Sorry, got a little bit out of alignment there, but that we've had 50 inches so far of snow this season, which is double what we've been used to over the last few years. In fact, from what we found on the internet, so it must be true, is that most snowfall since 1958. So I'm sure that on the internet, we'll find all different kinds of how much inches we have had, but for the most part, we've had double than what we're used to, which really has caused a lot of changes in the way that we do our snow business. But the bigger part of that is, I think, that is important for people to understand and for our residents to understand, what's really caused the change in the way we've been handling our snow business is the fact that it's remained so cold. So typically, what happens, you have a snow, and then it gets warm, some of it thaws. It hasn't been thawing at all. So the snow is piling, piling, and piling, and it's causing a lot of unanticipated issues that... or we shouldn't say unanticipated, just causing more snow removal changes, if you will. So that has been kind of an interesting snowfall for all of us, and I'm sure all of us are very tired of shoveling our own driveways and our own sidewalks. So with that, this kind of sets the premise for where we're going now. So we've had a total of six snow emergencies that have been called this year. We had... The last one was extended for three days to do some more road cleanup. Out of that, six snow emergencies, 589 snow violation tickets have been written for those parking on the street during those emergencies, 114 abandoned vehicle citations. Typically, what happens is, obviously, cars that are completely snow-covered after, I think it's 48 hours, we can remove, they don't have to be part of the snow ordinance because... the snow emergency, because they're essentially been abandoned. In total, we've written 703 total snow-related tickets, and 20 cars have been towed during the process. I think that it's important for our residents to understand how we do handle the snow emergency. The main focus has to be, especially during these emergencies, major streets, fire routes and the school routes. We have 80 miles of road, so we do the best that we can with the staff that we have. The police officers are the ones that write those tickets, and those, again, are based on those priority areas. And it's important to note there that we do have limited resources, so we have to make sure that we have enough police officers also doing a normal call. And as we know, when it's snowing heavily and we're in the middle of an emergency, we also... That's also a time when there's lots of accidents and things of that nature. So we do try to do the best we can with the staff that we have. And I think the bigger issue is, the past practice and the culture here has been, especially with the lack of snow that we really have had in the last few years, is that we haven't really done much with the snow emergency. We... It was for a small period of time. Again, it was thaw, and it would melt, and then we'd go back to clean streets. And so what happened, though, is that because we're not as aggressive as some other communities with snow emergency when we really needed it, we weren't really getting the cooperation of streets or the vehicles being removed from the streets. So in this last one, this last week where we had that extended emergency, we were actually having a hard time finding the tow trucks in the yards to be able to manage the mass amount of activity that we needed to clean some of these roads. We had to reroute and figure out how it was that we could clean some of the roads, as some of them have become what we consider dangerously narrow. With that, with the help of Chief Sullivan and Chief Collins, we identified 13 streets that needed to be cleared. And again, what happened is there's nowhere for the snow to go. It's not fine. So streets, if you'll notice, are becoming incredibly narrow. There are some streets that became so narrow that it became somewhat of a hazard. And so we needed to get those streets cleared. And again, when we called the fire or the snow emergency, we just did not... Residents were just not removing their cars. So what we had to do is kind of create a way to get those 13 streets cleared, and with Lloyd, and again, Chief Sullivan, and Chief Collins, and Joe, kind of what we call Operation Clean Streets. So we were able to utilize the CERT team to help flyer those 13 streets. We had seven members of the CERT team and 20 hours of volunteer time flyer those particular areas to remove the cars, and it worked. So we were able to clear those 13 streets that we were... That I think both Chief Sullivan and Chief Collins considered dangerous at that point, and were able to plow those streets today and get those clean. Unfortunately, nine cars were towed in the process, but we did the best that we could to communicate the need during a snow emergency to remove your vehicle. As we move forward, again, this was something for us, is that you don't always want to plan for the worst-case scenario. You want to be ready for, but you don't want to plan for. But in this case, what happened was, we really needed the snow emergencies to work, and I know that there's been a lot of frustrated residents that, you know, people were just not moving their cars, and just frustrated residents that they don't want to move their cars. So it's kind of a 50/50, but the problem is, is we do need the assistance of our residents in moving our cars. So we're gonna continue to be as aggressive as we can this winter as it relates to snow emergencies, as well as moving forward. We're going to have to keep that sentiment and keep moving forward. But we need to take a look at the procedures and the policies that we do do as it relates to the snow emergencies. And staff has already talked about multiple ways that we want to address how we handle that, to make it easier for staff, as well as easier for our residents to understand and know what those snow emergencies are. So more than likely, over the course of the next few weeks, you'll see some requests for some possible ordinance adjustments and things of that nature that will help us as we move forward with that in the future. Some snow stepping statistics, this'll kind of tell you where we're going. In 2012, overtime budget for snow was 274 hours. So far, our overtime budget for snow has reached 1,052 hours, five times the amount. So you can tell right there that... I mean, again, I'm sure most residents don't need to be told how much snow we've had. Over the last 15 years, our average salt usage was 2,836 tons of salt. To date, we have already used this year 4,580 tons. Unfortunately, with that, though, the city of Ferndale has approximately 500 tons of salt to last for the remainder of the season. So...
That means it's done snowing.
It needs to be done snowing. Exactly. So what's gonna happen with that is, I don't want anybody to be concerned that we're not going to have enough salt. And we are working with the state right now to try to get more, but so is every other community in Michigan. So we just need people or our residents to be patient, and some of the lack of salt, you may notice right now that when it snows, that Woodward is clear pavement, where most communities don't get that luxury. You just might find some roads are not salted as much as they were before. They'll do more plowing instead of actual salting. Right now, we do a lot of salting and plowing, so we'll push back on that a little bit. Parking lots will be using a brine versus a salt, so it takes a lot less salt to make a brine than it is to just salt. So you'll notice that parking lots will have more of a liquid form of removing the ice and the snow. Sometimes it can kind of actually smell a little bit, but that is just salt in a different kind of method that they use for that. It's nothing to worry about. But Roy wanted me to make sure that you knew if you smell a little more strong in salt, that's why. But also to understand that we'll always have safety as the primary concern and driver in how much salt that we use. But it is important to note that we're getting close to the end, and so are many other communities, and we're gonna hopefully be able to fill that back up. And it also will be at a much higher price point. However, again, our safety and of our... The safety of our residents are our primary concern, so we just want the ability to have more salt. And I think this is a sentiment of everybody. So we are tired, tired of snow. We have heard that 40 degrees is coming next week, and we're all hopeful for that. So I threw a lot of information at you, and I want to open it up for questions, I think, between myself and Chief Collins and Chief Sullivan, and we'd be able to answer most of that. If you have any, I'd be happy to answer them.
Other questions, comments of council?
I could just say that in the years past, we have been real bad, chief officers, in dealing with our snow emergencies. But we have, like you say, we haven't had this amount of snow.
Correct.
So right now, we need to educate our residents. We do mean business here in the future. It's unfortunate, but we've got to clear the streets.
By coincidence, I came home while the salt trucks were coming down my street, and I couldn't get in my driveway because they were stopped in the middle of the street because the lead truck driver was out knocking on doors, getting homeowners to try to remove their cars. There was no way the trucks were passing without, like, gouging the cars, and obviously, we're not going to do that. So, you know, and I had to wait five, 10 minutes just to get in my driveway. So that's what's happening when people don't move their cars.
That's correct.
So I appreciate the increase in enforcement. And I know, we've heard from lots of residents, they're very happy. I think I hear more of happiness because they want plowed streets.
Through the chair, two things. One, again, we've all said this a number of times, just really gratitude towards our employees who are doing a phenomenal job, really kind of trying to keep up with the significant amount of snow. I am interested in the 1,000-plus hours of overtime that we've expended compared to previous years, and the impact on the projected budget that we expected to expend during that time, and what's the financial implication of that?
It will be doing that at mid-year adjustment in March.
Do you have a sense of?
Uh, no. It's... I can tell you what, we're over budget.
I'm sure there's more to come.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure there isn't. I'm not saying it's not money well spent, but I'd just like to...
Yep, no, we can get that from you.
And our DPW is also dealing with water-made breaks at the same time, so...
I have, by the way, been in contact with our state representative. You know, Lansing has a few extra dollars for a change, and she's actually pursuing whether or not there are any dollars available to help local communities with winter storm issues like we're having. And so she's, you know, she's looking into that, and she said there may be some avenues for that. So maybe there's a way that Lansing can help us. But I really do appreciate April and Chief as well, Chief Collins, the stepped-up enforcement. We had gotten kind of lax, but like you said, because of the winters that we had, but it's important that residents understand that the DPW folks that are plowing our streets have a really difficult job, and it's hard enough when the cars aren't on the street. It's... Can be impossible to do when the cars are on the street. So I hope residents understand that what they're up against and why this is so important. And a reminder also that if you don't have a driveway to call us, call DPW, correct, and get a permit, and you can put a permit on your car, which will allow you to park in the street. But that's the only exception. Otherwise, you need to get your car off the street, so...
And just another note, too, of not only for safety reasons and for being able to clear the roads in a much better way, that when cars are parked in the street, it increases our overtime, because that means more passes through the neighborhood. So if they were clear, they'd only have to do one pass or maybe two passes, depending on how much snows. But when the cars are in the way, it does require much more overtime to make that happen. So again, it is really very important to remove your vehicle from the street.
Thank you. All right. Our next item of business would be Call the Audience. Call the Audience is up to 30 minutes now, and more time if we need it at the end of the meeting, for members of the audience to come up and talk about any issue that they'd like that's not on the agenda, that's not on the rest of the agenda, because we'll give you an opportunity to speak to those when we get there. But if there's anyone from the audience that would like to address council, you have three minutes to say whatever you'd like. Come on up, give us your name and your address, if you're comfortable doing that. And the floor is open.
Hi, Jeannie Davis, President of the Ferndale Senior Group, and I just want to announce that on Wednesday, at the Senior Regular Meeting at the Culic Center at 11:00 a.m., that's Wednesday, February 12th, Gary Taylor from the Historic Society will be giving a talk on dirty politics in Ferndale's history. So I think, you know, everybody would find it interesting. Dan, he told me to tell you that indeed you are in it.
Oh, good.
Yeah. But it is free, and all are welcome. You don't have to be a senior to attend, so everybody's welcome. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jeannie. Anyone else from the audience who would like to address council this evening?
Paul Kish, 707 West Taylorhurst.
Yes. Good evening, sir.
Mayor Coulter, I'd like to thank you for saying hi. Dan Martin, thank you. Dan Crisp. April Lynch, thank you for coming down and shaking hands, saying that you wanted to discuss whatever issues I have. And I don't know if Derek Delacorte's here. I don't think so.
I guess he's not. He's in the building, but not in the room at the moment.
I would just like to thank Derek for wishing me a Happy New Year on the street. That was good of him. And that's the way I'm gonna leave it for tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing then, we'll move on. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are items that council considers routine, and we enact them in one motion unless council decides to remove something from the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda. Let me read those items now. Item A would be the approval of a minutes of the regular meeting held January 27, 2014. Item B would be the approval to authorize the police department to purchase office furnishings from interior environments of Novi in the amount of $51,130.47 with a 10% plexionary clause, there's a new word for me, from the Drug Forfeiture Fund. Item C is the approval to purchase two Philip Heart Start MRX-12 lead, or lead, cardiac monitors, lead? Thank you. Lead cardiac monitors for a total of $39,982.54 to be paid from the capital outlay account as submitted by the fire chief. D, approval of the agreement for election services between Oakland County and the city of Ferndale is submitted, and to authorize the city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Item E is the approval of an amendment to appointment guidelines for board of review as submitted by our city clerk. And finally, item F is the approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of our council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move, go ahead, Melanie.
Nope, nope. You got out the gate first.
Okay. I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Well, I will support that.
All right. So moved by Lennon and supported by Piana to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there discussion on the consent agenda? If not, Sherilyn, you want to call the roll?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Regular agenda item A is the consideration to appoint Suzanne Rowe to the Board of Review for a term ending December 31, 2015. Sherilyn, do you want to just briefly introduce that item?
Certainly. Ms. Rowe is certainly no stranger to council. She has, I've got the wrong item here. No, sorry. She has been active in the community for many years and has expressed quite a bit of interest in serving on the Board of Review. We have need for two alternate members right now, so I would recommend that we confirm the appointment of Ms. Rowe to one of the alternate positions.
And I will say, Suzanne, I talked to her by Facebook message today. She's down in Florida, and so couldn't be here this evening, otherwise she would have been here in person.
I move to appoint Suzanne Rowe to the Board of Review for a term expiring December 31, 2001-5.
Support. Moved by Lennon, supported by Pollocka.
Do we have to designate she's being appointed as an alternate?
Did we not?
I don't believe that was.
Yeah, as an alternate member of the Board of Review.
I'll accept that a little bit.
All right. As an alternate member of the Board of Review. Any discussion, questions? Sherilyn, you want to call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Now, moving on to regular agenda. Item B is a consideration of water and sewer rates, and our city manager, April Lynch, is going to present.
Take it away.
That item.
I think I see this one.
In your dreams.
I changed seats on you, sorry. It's too much to do at an angle.
Gotcha.
It's been a long time coming, but I think we are ready to and prepared to discuss in more detail the Water and Sewer Fund report that we've mentioned, that we've been working through. Before I get started, I do want to talk a little bit about who's been on this internal team, if you will, to address and to work through the questions and answers that council's been looking for as it relates to the water fund. Karen Meyer, our finance director, is here tonight to answer any questions. Again, Lloyd Currington couldn't be here today, and then Joe Gaucho as well, has been part of this team to kind of go through this fund and make sure that all answers that we have regarding this particular fund have been answered. So I'm going to actually do the presentation, but both Karen and Joe are here to offer any answers to questions or to clarify any other questions or concerns that council has as it relates to this particular presentation. So without, we'll go ahead and get started. Please feel free anytime to ask us questions as they come up. You don't have to wait until the end of this presentation to do so. So I want to talk a little bit about where we've been. It's been actually almost a year that we started this process, and I do want to apologize for the length of time that it's taken, but we lost two key department heads who, through retirement, who were a big part of the Water and Sewer Fund. That was our DPW director and our finance director, both left in the middle of doing all this. So we were kind of trying to put our pieces back together, utilizing the staff and the history that we had. So as you know, we broke this down into four phases. Phase one was the meter reading process. Phase two was the Water and Sewer Fund audit. Phase three was a review of policies and recommendations. And phase four was the final, and that was the review of the city's rates and what makes that up. So I'm going to go through a little bit about the recap of where we've been and where we're moving and how we're moving forward. Again, phase one was the reading system upgrade. The Meganet reading system was completed, its upgrade, in April of 2013, a reminder of that. We had had a new reading system put in that was only reading at 80%. The meters themselves work and have been working. It was the reading system, the automatic reading system, that was not working to the capacity that we needed, and that has been replaced, and we've moved forward with that. And that project was completed in April of 2013, especially with the help and the direction of Lloyd Currington, our new DPW director. Phase two was another larger phase that was happening at the same time we were doing that, and that was what we called the Water and Sewer Audit. We had Abraham Gaffney, our auditors, go through that filing from top to bottom and to confirm that the bills people were receiving, that residents were receiving, and the amount we were charging was appropriate and clear and matched the receivables and the expenditures. And that was concluded and found to be, I think they refer to that as unqualified, no issues, correct? So there was no issues, no red flags. We did have Abraham Gaffney, again, go through, too, just to confirm. I know there were some concerns that we weren't billing a people appropriately, but when they went through that, again, they found that to be that our expenditures and revenues matched what should have been there as well as the bills. So that was completed, and we presented it to council on March 25 of 2013, and we do have the report online for anybody who's interested in reading that. At the same time we were doing that, we also took a look at the policies that we had within that particular fund and how we were managing our customer service relationship with our residents. We actually made quite a few changes with the permission of city council during that process. One of the big things that was, that our residents were very frustrated with was the lack of online payments. So that started May 1 of 2013. One of the benefits to that is we're one of the very few communities at this point that doesn't actually charge people to do that online. We'll be relooking at that or looking at that the next budget process. We also, another significant change that we made was we eliminated the $50 late charge that had been put on a few years ago, which just seemed to be frustrating for everybody. It just really seemed to be too much of a penalty, and we all agreed in council's support removing that $50 late charge and retain the normal simplified 10% late fee, which was much of the norm throughout most communities. The other thing that we did to help was establish payment plans to provide short-term assistance for those in need, for those who have temporary hardship or other reasons for needing a payment plan, and that's worked out great. We've had quite a few people that were able to pay off their water payments through that process. One of the things that we're still working on, it's not as easy as we thought it would be, is we have had a lot of feedback that our water and sewer bill is very complicated and not very user-friendly. So we're working with New World right now, which is a system that we use to generate the bills, to see if we can restructure those bills to be more clear and concise, and so that our residents understand exactly what we're paying for. And we're also looking at, in the next go-around with bills in the next few months, an infographic that also shows where does our, when you're paying your water bill, where does that money actually go to? So hopefully, in the next few cycles, our residents will be able to see that and understand a little bit more, and through this presentation of what exactly goes into how we establish those water rates. So are there any questions on the past as we start talking about where we are today? Okay. So I know this is a little hard to see, but the next phase is really take, we took a hard look at the city's water and sewer rates, and we wanted to talk a little bit about not only what does that look like for us, but how does that compare to some other communities? And just for the sake of, you know, not airing everybody's dirty laundry, if you will, we refer, you'll see Ferndale and then City One and City Two. City One and City Two are a few communities that are within Oakland County, so they're somewhat comparable and very comparable as it relates to user numbers. So we use these as a catalyst to have this conversation and jumping off point of how it is that we compare. And before I go into detail, the bottom line is, this is not an apples-to-apples comparison. Everybody budgets differently, and you'll get to see throughout this presentation that there is no right or wrong way to budget for water and sewer. It's just what works for that community and that particular, for their particular fund, and we'll walk through all of that. So you'll notice there that, I'm not going to go over the numbers with you because there's a lot of numbers to throw at you. In the next few slides, I talk about percentages, but when we're talking about what goes into water and sewer rates and basically our expenditures, is the purchase of water in the sewage treatment is a huge part of that. You also have, most communities and all communities have repairs and depreciation, administration, interest expense, reserve for working capital to make their totals. So you'll see in total that Ferndale's expenses are about $17 million per year, and City One is $21.4 million per year, and City Two is at $9.8 million per year. So when I, we're going to go into the next slide, and we'll talk more about percentages, it'll be a little easier to talk about. You'll see here, in particular, I focused on this particular slide, on what Ferndale's costs are. 50% of all of our expenditures go to the actual purchase of water and sewage treatment from Detroit Water and Sewer. The other bigger expense is about 28% goes to repairs, maintenance, and depreciation, and then 12% actually goes to city personnel, and 4% going to administration and interest expense, and 2% going to working capital. Now, we're going to talk about that as it relates to the difference between what's working capital and what's in a fund balance, or as I've been told by Plant Moran, it's not really a fund balance called net asset position, but the working capital reserve is for the projects you're working on that particular year, and mostly unexpected expenses, which you always have in a water sewer fund. You have water main breaks and things of that nature. So how does that compare as it relates to the city of Ferndale to the other communities? So here you have, in the cost comparison, water and sewer purchases across the board are somewhat similar. Ferndale is at 50% again of water and sewer purchases, and city number one is at 54%, where city number two is only at 39%. Personnel and administration, I merged because, again, you don't know how they're budgeting, but personnel and administration are typically, include a lot of the personnel, as well as any administration of the fund, such as sending out your water bills, the cost of the software, all of those things that are required to be able to manage that system. This is where you start to see some major differences. The city of Ferndale only has 16% of their budget going toward personnel and administration, where city one is at 23%, and city two is at 48%. So again, you kind of start to see that the apples-to-apples comparison is not, it's not there. So under capital and maintenance, another point that you'll notice is quite a difference is that Ferndale has 30% dedicated to capital and maintenance, where city one is at 19% and city two is at 12%. And interest on debt, which is the 12-pound drain, was steady across the board at 4%. And we're going to go into a little more detail as we go through these slides of what this really means and how it is that we've established our rates through that. So again, for those that are visual, we have a couple of charts to show just the, very much the difference that you can see there in the pie chart that we've just gone over. So again, with city one using, you know, having 50% water and sewer, or 54% versus our 50% as it relates to water purchases, and again, the big one you'll see up there, I gotta see my pointer, is the 23% for the personnel and administration compared to our 16, and the 30 of our capital versus the 19. So it's just for those that are visual on the pie chart, you can see that it's very different. So this is where the difference really comes into, is what you saw going back here one more time, I'm going to go back. Right here, this is what we're going to talk about for a few minutes. This is capital and maintenance part. The 30% versus the 19 and 12 of the other communities of how we move ourself forward as well as our fund balance. So bear with me as I get technical, but I'll try not to be as technical as I can. So this is where the funding of the Water and Sewer Fund becomes unique to the community that we're in. There are two ways that you can work through an enterprise fund, and that is when, is depreciation versus bonding. And what the city of Ferndale does is we focus our budgeting on depreciation. So this is the part where I'm going to try not to be too technical, but we're going to talk a little bit about how it is that we've established how we manage our fund. So let's talk a little bit about the difference between depreciation and bonding, and how that matters into establishing, the establishment of our rates. So talking about depreciation, when you talk about funding a fund such as that, it allocates a more exact approximation of true costs. So when you do depreciation, you're actually focused on what it actually takes to run the system and be prepared for projects and unanticipated issues that that fund will have. It creates short-term, larger cash surplus. However, all new construction should be able to be paid through that, or trying to get to that particular phase. Also, depreciation helps smooth annual rate increases because you have a longer timeframe to pay for the infrastructure because you're already preparing for it. And also, interestingly enough, that one of the city of Ferndale's financial policies is to focus on making sure funds such as water and sewer, that the user sees our direct correlation and directly part of making sure that we pay for and address all the direct costs. So that means that we have approached the system by making sure that at any given time that we have the capital and the means to pay for what we need to do to keep the system moving forward. The reverse of that is that you can not have a fund balance or have a very minimal fund balance and plan on going out for bonds for your projects as they come up. Bond debt can be repaid over 20 or 30 years, which typically can cause a higher allocation of cost to the current customer because you have interest, if you will, or a cost to doing the bonding. This also, the bigger part of actually bonding is it causes rate spiking, which means that you have a certain cost to the fund, but then if you have to go out for a major project, then now your fund increases based on the amount that bond goes out for the project costs. And typically, most communities would go out for more than just one project. They would probably take a look at five years, if you will, and go out for a bond for that. And then again, I had already talked about that. It does require, when you use bonding, a payment of interest or expenses, and that increases the cost to that. So what the fund of Ferndale looks like is that we focus on depreciation, and I'm going to talk, I'm going to move into in just a second what our fund balance looks like, and this is where it starts to become more clear, if you will, on how that we're doing that and what that looks like for us in the future. And at this point, too, as we start talking about the fund balance and depreciation versus bonding, we can answer more technical questions if you have those. Karen is able to help us out with that a little bit more. So take the information I just provided, the difference between bonding and depreciation, and now we need to talk about our fund balance, because all of this, all of this does tie in together. You will notice a distinct difference here in our fund balance. Our fund balance is about eight and a half million, almost to nine if you end this next fiscal year, where city one is just under $4,000 and city two is just under $2,000. Or, I'm sorry, sorry. City one is under $4 million, and city two is just under $2 million. The difference here is this, that we are planning to pay cash for the projects that we have moving forward. But what is more important is that you still need a fund balance that manages, I'll go forward here, delay for billing, so you bill, so you have to wait for the income to come in, emergency replacement, 90 days of operating expenditures, and a year's worth of debt service. So when you put all of that into our fund balance, if you really, if we had to deplete our fund in order to have, to be able to survive, your floor is about $4 million, which is half of our fund. You can see here, not saying, I'm just going to be blunt about it, that if you look at this and these other two communities, they don't have that capacity for fund balance. They don't have that. So we're already able to manage any crisis that comes our way and pay for cash for our projects. Why this is so important is that when you have a healthy fund balance, it helps ensure that the viability of the fund is there for future projects and for the goal of sustaining that particular fund. If you're waiting to bond, you can't control the costs. So basically, what this has done is put the city in the driver's seat in how we move forward with setting our rates. When you take a look at, we have over the next 15 years at minimum $7 million in projects. So those are projects that we actually anticipate doing. You also have to take into consideration the ones that shock you and you didn't expect. Like, I know that council member Lennon said we had a few water main breaks this year. We actually have, you know, some of our residents' lines are frozen, and they could end up becoming a problem for our lines, if you will, things that we didn't expect. So as I talked about, it's even though, I'm calling it a fund balance because that's what council in this community is used to, but it is called your net asset position, which means what unrestricted funds do you have? And so we really, it's defining net healthy balance. But what's more important, too, is because we've planned that way and because we are prepared to move forward, knowing and understanding what our fund needs, one of the nice parts about this is, as many of us know, we have bonds that are, they're called general obligation bonds, that are currently on our taxes that we're going to be looking at over this next budget year and moving forward, continuing to keep our infrastructure up to date, is that more than likely that there will be no water projects that need to be included in that. So that will, in the end, lower the amount of money that we need moving forward for those infrastructure bonds as we move forward. So when you talk about the health of that fund, again, what this has done is put us in the driver's seat of determining what our rates are going to be, where some other communities are going to be told, this is what it needs to be because they're catching up with the water and sewer rates that are established by DS, the Detroit Water and Sewer, but as well as they're waiting for what's going to break next to go out for bond for that. So right now, while it seems that we are higher, and we put that out there last time, that we are one of the higher ones, we are prepared for moving forward, and we are going to be prepared to look at managing those costs going forward, whereas many other communities are going to start looking at infrastructure that's crumbling, and they're going to go out for bond, and before you know it, we're either equal or they've started to surpass us. So this plan- So, this planned maintenance, knowing and understanding what our next few years look like for projects, help us mitigate those extra costs that water main breaks that could happen, collapsed lines and other repairs that could be detrimental to the system. So, by doing this, we can, again, continue to be ahead of that curve, and I know it seems odd now, because it seems like we're so much higher, but I'll show you in a minute that it, we're not as high, much more higher, we're not as high as we think we are. One of the things I want to talk about is, when you start looking at, backing up for just a second, one of council's direction or directives, if you will, was, when you come back with those rates, we want to know what you can do staff-wise or expenses-wise to lower those costs, or what can we do to make sure that we have the lowest possible cost we have. So, it's important to understand that fifty percent of our budget is determined by the rates authorized by Detroit, and they're going through, as you've heard on the, probably in quite a lot, quite a bit with the media, if you will, that they're struggling very much, and there's talk about authorities and things of that nature. That is very concerning to the city, and we've actually been working and making sure that we're in the ear of the folks to help them understand how concerned that we are about the water rates with Detroit, and in fact, we've heard our own residents say, what are they doing to try to control those costs? So, that's fifty percent of our budget. And then, for every five percent increase that we have from DSW, or, I keep calling it that, I must want shoes, the Detroit Water and Sewer, for every five percent increase that they give to us, that increases our expenses by five hundred thousand, and this year, we're slated for about a four-point-five percent increase. So, those increases are notable, and five percent is not what you would consider a huge increase, if you will, for something of that magnitude. The other thing that impacts our fund is that healthcare and other fringe benefits typically increase at a rate higher than inflation. Fortunately, as I talked about before, we only have twelve percent of our budget is personnel, which is significantly lower than most of our communities, so for us, that's a good thing, because as those costs go up, they're not as high as maybe some other communities have. And then, the steeper rate cut you take now will accelerate the necessary rate in future years. So, with that, I'm actually just gonna throw out here that, looking at this fund and knowing all that we know, that I sat down with Plant Moran and said, we need to find this healthy balance of moving this fund forward, keeping the theme going of the depreciation model, but recognizing that council and our residents are very frustrated with our rates, and that what kind of reduction could we provide that still keeps that healthy balance? And speaking with Plant Moran and working with them, that I would actually be comfortable, if council's comfortable, reducing our rates by ten percent for fiscal year 2015, and that also includes the five, almost five percent increase that we're expecting from Detroit this year as well. But with that final recommendation, a recommendation I'm making, I also want to talk to council about, and I'll provide this information during our budget process, but there's a five-year budget forecast modeling program that Plant Moran can do for us, which is, some other communities use this, which allows us to take a look at all of this information, understanding our goal of making sure that we have a healthy fund, but not raising rates too high, that we could enter in all of this data, expenses, revenues, what we want our fund balance to remain at, and we can, they can help us model what those rates will look like for the next five years, that we can feel confident that we're raising rates at a level that is appropriate and keeps us, so that we have our fund balance that meets all of our needs. And then, I also will be reviewing during the budget process and doing the conversations of confirming and ensuring that all of those water and sewer projects are covered and won't need to be part of that infrastructure cost, that we can take a look at what kind of level that we would need for our general obligation bonds, which, again, I would imagine, we're hoping will be much lower than they are today. So, if we do that, what does that look like? Right now, our water rate is fifty, we have water and sewer rates at fifty-five dollars each, for a total of one hundred and ten. We also do something called a service charge. Other communities, some of them have a service charge, others have a minimum charge, if you will. What the service charge is, it covers administration and pretty much is very close to equalling administration and interest expense. The thought behind that is, is that no matter what, if people are using the water or not, those expenses occur, and so, the fluctuating part of your bill is the one hundred and ten dollars, which is your flow of water and sewer usage. So, when you add that together, our total is one hundred and forty-three, compared to city one, which is ninety-three, and city two is eighty-four. So, city one, we are thirty-five percent higher than city one, and forty-one percent higher than city two. But by lowering their rates ten percent, we lower our rate down to one-twenty-eight, which that brings us to twenty-seven percent higher than city one, and thirty-four percent higher than city two. Now, this is without knowing what their rates are this year as well. Yes?
If I may, I'm sorry, through the chair. It's a little misleading, though, I think, to say it's a ten percent reduction, it's really closer to like a twelve-and-a-half percent reduction, because we're absorbing that future value of the Detroit-
That is correct.
-city water rate, which we don't know what city one or city two is gonna be, so that differential is probably even greater on top of that.
Yes.
So, it's a twelve-and-a-half percent relief, as well as that future offset cost and the differential for city one and city two.
Yeah, that is absolutely correct, and that is, what I'd like to do is continue to monitor city one and city two to see how quickly those rates converge. And going back, I want to show you this one more time. The fund balance, this is a significant part of the conversation. Again, city one and city two, they may not even, I mean, I don't even, again, I'm not speaking for how they budget, but the bottom line is that I don't believe, looking at, if you looked at it, straight up, looking at it now, they do not have, they are not prepared for a major catastrophe. And we've had some, and I say major catastrophe, I'm not talking about, you know, your whole system blows up, we're talking about what happened in 2008. We had some communities in Oakland County and Wayne County that lost a significant amount of their population and had vacancies, and that just tanked their fund. I think the city of Inkster is thirteen million in the hole. That is real, that happened, and we all know this could happen again, and so, we are prepared not only for the emergency, but prepared moving forward, and I think that that is so important. This puts us, right here, in the driver's seat, and that's what I talked about, that modeling program and being very conscious of our rates, that that really will allow us to set the tone and set our rates based on knowledge and understanding what our system needs to maintain itself. But, yeah, that is, I'll be very interested to see this year, the rates for Detroit water were all over the board, I don't know if anybody saw the article, it ranged from, some people are getting a twenty-one percent increase, we were fortunate and had the four percent. Plus, our flow is steady, we have our industrial park is ninety-eight percent capacity, which is helping, so the more users we have, the less that spreads the cost to everybody. So, I do feel very confident that it is not gonna be much more than a couple of years when our rates are equal to everybody else, to most of the other communities that many of our residents compare us to. It's also important to note that Ferndale has not raised rates since July first of 2012, and again, as we talked about, I am proposing a ten percent decrease, and we've already talked about that as we're monitoring our rates, holding steady, and doing a lowering, that many of the other communities will be raising their rates to meet the needs of their costs as well. I threw a lot at you, it was a lot of technical, it has been a very interesting research for project for all of us involved, but I feel that staff has a great handle on where we're going, and a lot more information to provide to council when it's time to talk about rates. And, again, during the budget process, I will propose that side project to have that modeling rate, so that we feel like we have the right information to look at what our rates are in the future and what that five years might look like.
And just to be clear, you're advocating not only a ten percent rate decrease to the water rates, but also to the service charge as well?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it'll be the whole, across the board, so you would end up seeing the water rates and sewer rates at forty-nine fifty, and the service charge at twenty-nine seventy, for a total of one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents versus the current one forty-three.
And if I may, it's because it's not insignificant, part of the recommendation is also to absorb the rate increase from the Detroit City Water Department, which is almost a third of the cost savings in this package.
Yes.
I mean, it's significant.
It is. So, technically, if we were the type to actually raise our rates at the rate that Detroit does, then that actually would have been increased significantly, but I could have showed that many ways, but yes, technically, we are absorbing that, so as council member Martin said, it's much more than a ten percent rate decrease.
So, are there questions of council?
Have a comment, does it-
I have a comment.
Was it that appropriate, yeah, I think there's a couple things, I think, I really like the recommendations that you're presenting, I think they're fair, I think there's a lot of frustration in the past about the rates that we have charged, but truth of the matter is, the fund balance, I think, and, you know, in looking at this and reflecting this, is healthy enough, particularly compared to the approach that other cities have taken, that it's not that we have at any level overcharged, but we are insulating our residents from future price shock of emergencies or crisis that could come. We are well-prepared to sustain significant infrastructure challenges out of this fund, based on how we've priced that in the past, and we're comfortable enough with what's there, that we can now go back and look at a rollback for the rate and the absorption of the cost, and still be responsible, and it's not really that we're cutting the rate as much as we are, we find that we are reducing the contribution to the net asset position.
Yes.
I want to get the term right. Then, we otherwise would have contributed to that, and that's where that price relief comes from.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, next job. Great.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you and the team for putting all this together. I know this may be confusing to some people, but us data nerds kind of like this stuff. But, more importantly, I think, I think a lot of people felt over the years that we were being overcharged, which, compared to other communities, we were, but we were investing in our future, and that's something that I feel strongly about, and what I like is, even with the decrease, we will still continue to invest in our future, so.
I do have a question, and I know the ongoing discussions with the Detroit water is, you know, who knows what will happen there, and I know we are absorbing a five percent rate, but that rate could go higher in 2014, depending on decisions made that the city obviously has no power or control over. How much absorption can we deal with, and how much are you willing to take on?
I think that as we move forward, that rate, that modeling rate, the rate modeling program will help us to establish what we can and cannot absorb. I know that our staff met with Commissioner Nash on Thursday, and he, both our staff and Commissioner Nash did talk about the concerns that we have, it is a very real concern, I mean, it is, if the authority happens, could significantly impact the rates in not a good way for many of the suburbs that surround Detroit. So, I think one of the, I can't answer that tonight, but that would where that modeling program will really come into play, it's going to be a very important feature to making our decisions, because we will be able to put in the what-ifs, what does that look like, so that we are prepared for that. So, it is, one of the nice things about doing this now is that that does cushion the blow a little bit, if they do become out of whack, if we do get a twenty or thirty percent increase, which could happen, and again, as I, with our fifty percent of our budget being water and sewer from Detroit, that is a significant impact to our expenses. So, I don't have an answer for you tonight, but I think that as we move forward, we're gonna, we are going to need to get a handle on what that does mean.
Okay, and then my final comment is really trying to showcase our efforts to do long-term planning in a very different way, and we've been categorically going after our funds and our capital improvement plan, and went to two-year budgeting, and now you're going at a longer-term approach with our water, which matches with our long-term, five-year outlook for our capital improvement plan, and this is sort of matching that, and so, and anticipating, you know, known projects, right?
Yes.
So, I think that's important for our residents to understand that we're being very proactive and thinking down the road.
Yes.
And thank you very, very much.
Well, and so, related to your first question, in terms of how much we can absorb in the future, so, as we're sitting here in the future, watching the water and sewer slideshow in years to come, what should we be looking for, as a general rule of thumb for the fund balance? So, with the, you know what I'm saying, what should be our guide?
I think that as we move forward, that trying to keep it between eight and nine million as a standard would be appropriate. So, remember, as we start doing projects, it's going to be depleted, so more, you have a lot of your rates are going to be part of the Detroit rates, but there's gotta be this healthy balance of keeping that fund balance at that level that we are doing the depreciation model. Now, again, if things go really wacko, and we do get some significant rate spikes, or things do change, we can change that model. I'm not recommending it right now, I think that model works really well for us, but that's one of the nice things about where we are, is we are absolutely in the driver's seat on this fund, and so, the things that we need to take a look at are really trying to keep this healthy balance of remembering that about four million we need just to manage the system in the fund balance, to make sure that we can, just like in our own fund balance with our general fund, that healthy balance of making sure that if disaster hits, and again, that disaster's a big word, that we have the money for that.
So, that's what I guess I'm getting at, so is it the four million dollars that should be the red flag to us, because anything lower than that, we don't have, we don't have the fund balance to-
That's the floor.
And the rest of that is, there are going to be projects that are gonna raise and lower that, and we shouldn't worry if next year it's six million, I mean, we'll ask the question of why, but we shouldn't worry about that, because that's what we're anticipating spending that money on, and so, it's the four million dollar threshold that would be a red flag to us that we've dipped below a comfortable fund balance?
Yeah, and trying not to get too near that mark, because you want to try it again, the whole point of that five-year modeling, I see where you're going, is that you want to try to keep the rates as smooth as possible, to keep that level, so you don't have that moment in time where you have to suddenly raise the rates twenty percent, because that's a huge spike, and that's what, I think, is, from just understanding what's going on in general with the environment, you're going to see some communities are going to have to do that, because their general funds are covering their water and sewer fund, and they can't afford that anymore. And so, what, that's finding that healthy balance, and I'm really very actually excited about that modeling program, because that will really help us look at, what does that next five years look like, and how can we smooth those rates to ensure that we're not raising them when we don't need to, or not raising them when we do need to, to try to keep that level of consistency of having the floor, what we call the floor, the four million, and then the added projects, that we can keep them as stable, and just to keep them stable, so people can, like, don't get that bill that's suddenly twenty or thirty percent higher.
Well, and you bring up a good point, because, and I'm not gonna pick on any other communities, but there are communities that are funding their water and sewer out of their general fund, whether they're transparent about that or not, and that's why I think it was Phase Two, which was our audit, was so important, and that we took those steps first, that we're confident that our, that those funds are not being taken from anywhere else was important. The other thing you touched on briefly, that I think is significant for residents to know, is the fact that because we now have budgeted enough in our, in this fund balance to cover projects, the 2016 infrastructure bond is not gonna have to be required to cover major water projects, which it currently had, you know, that was, that was part of it, and so, so, there's the ten percent savings now, or twelve-and-a-half percent savings, or whatever we want to call that, but there is, there also is going, residents are going to see a savings, even if it's, you know, it's not a reduction, it's asking for less, but they'll see a reduction in the needs for the infrastructure. So, I think that's a very significant aspect of this, dude.
We actually have staff right now working on what that, you know, as we know during the budget process and moving forward to this next year, we have a lot of conversations to have on, you know, the HEBLY and then the GO bonds that are going to expire, and, you know, we're definitely excited that we should see that the GO bonds that we would need to supplement would, will be lower, so, because of this planning.
So, you know, if you're asking me, do I want to lower rates ten percent, yeah. Actually, a motion would probably be in order before we have much more discussion, we'd probably have more than we should without a motion.
So, I would move that we accept the proposals presented by the city manager in her presentation?
I support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. All right, now, just as further discussion, questions, comments?
I just want to thank Gabriel and staff for doing this, I mean, when she showed me all the facts and figures, I think it was last week we met, I was just amazed. I was amazed at what kind of shape city one and city two are in, and we know who those are, and that's not good, but good management.
I also wanted to thank Councilman Dan Martin for leading this effort on behalf of council, so thank you very much.
I mean, I think, I would echo that, Dan, because this has been a thoughtful process. We could have gone right to rates, which is what the residents and our biggest concern is, obviously, but by taking this in a phased approach and making sure that we were doing the- But, but by taking this in a phased approach and making sure that we were doing the research and the due diligence that we needed to, to begin to have the conversation about rates was important. We could have rushed this and arbitrarily picked a number. But I think it's thoughtful, and I think it's a balanced cut. We could, could have done more, I suppose. You could argue that we should just cut the fund balance to four million now. But I think you, you've made a strong argument that there, there are projects involved in that and future bonding, and this is a, this is a, I'm excited that we can do a cut like this, but it's also a responsible figure that, that can be verified with the other work that you've done. So I appreciate that as well. Other comments? Well, when would, when would this start? When could residents begin to see a 10% decrease?
Well, right now, the motion on the table is a 10% rate reduction for fiscal year 2015. So July 1st, you would start to see on your bill. Now, everybody gets a different bill quarterly, so depending where your bill falls, it would still, you would see a July 1st statement.
Stating July 1st.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's when the Detroit water city rates go up as well.
Yes.
Perfect time.
Perfect. They go up, we go down.
Yep.
Any other discussions? Then Cheryl, and I think you could call it all.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Holica?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to regular agenda, Item C is the consideration of a parking management bid award. And Joe, are you going to introduce that item?
I sure will.
All right. We noticed that when we were back there, actually. But Joe's got it covered. Yes, Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm here tonight to present on a proposal for a parking management solution for the city of Ferndale. We do have members of Republic Parking System in the audience today, and they'll be available for questions after the presentation. I'd like to begin the presentation with a brief recap of the auto parking, auto parking fund for this current fiscal year ending in 2014. I do want to remind residents and council that no tax dollars are involved as part of the revenue mix. You'll see that the biggest pieces of our revenue sources are from the pay stations and the parking lots. We have the Dunkin' Solutions, the Parking Passes, Park Mobile, and through enforcement and citations. As you can see, 71% of our revenue mix is from the pay station revenues. Then you have the on-street revenues phasing down into the Parking Passes and our mobile Revenues are projecting upwards since the installation of the system. We are beyond the original projections, actually, for this, this year. We are, we are originally projecting an increase from 711,000 to 800,000, but we're on pace for 882,000 in revenues from the parking system this year, which is a significant increase. It's approximately a 19% increase. And we do still have a healthy fund balance of 1.4 million in the fund. Currently, we've raised 518,000 in revenues this year. As I just mentioned, it's a 90% increase. We have seen our revenue mix up to 35% in credit cards, slowly building up. For the first six months to nine months, it was hanging steady at about 20 to 25%. So we are currently seeing those rise to about 35, some weeks closer to 40, but on average 35%. We do expect that to continue to increase, especially as we look at the different rates. Why multi-space? I want to do a brief recap just on why we chose to initiate Phase One. And Phase One was installing multi-space meter parking pay stations in municipal parking lots to replace traditional antiquated Dunkin'. We did so to improve operational improvements?
I was just going to say, can you call them coin meters? Because I'm not sure if people know.
Correct, yeah. The traditional single, single head meters are coin meters, sorry.
I thought it was a doughnut or something.
So, we, we did this to improve, to make operational improvements, security improvements, and some long-term investment improvements. A quick rehash of our operational improvements. The stations do provide a more flexible payment platform. We had heard consistently that quarters and, and coinage is beginning to diminish with users in downtown areas. A lot of people go out with cash and credits, definitely more with credit cards now. So these new stations do accept cash, coin, and credit. They're mobile-friendly, they work with Park Mobile, which is our current mobile platform provider. And they also offer the ability to renew sessions or add more time via your credit card, should you have paid with a credit card. You're reminded of this with a text message. The system does provide benefits of just-in-time management. And what I mean by that, our pay stations become smart revenue centers. We don't have to go meter to meter to meter, taking time to look for what meters are filled that need to be emptied. We're now informed when they need to be emptied. So the meters are smart, and, and that is a good principle that we capture. The same principles apply to service alerts as well. So now, you know, traditionally Dunkin', or single space meter heads, do not inform us if they're broken. We find out when we stumble upon them, and, and there was no way to react to that, respond to that. So that means lost revenue and, uh, lost customer service opportunity. Now, we receive service alerts, so if a pay station might be suffering a coin jam, or if it's filled up with cash and coin, we can then respond proactively. And a lower cost of ownership. You also, you know, reduced 900 individual meter heads to 31 pay stations. So it's a significant capital reduction and, reduction in maintenance expense. And they are more secure and less of liability risk, and I'll speak to that right now. Just a recap, in 2010 and 2011, we did see, received several notable thefts from meters. We did set up some surveillance, and the suspects were caught in 2011. There were instances where we were having zero revenue reads from parking lots because of the theft. So the installation of these pay stations have significantly enhanced our security, and now we've had zero instances of meter theft since the installation. So now, after Phase One, we are looking at focusing on the future while perfecting our present. And what that means is, we've learned a lot about the parking as an industry over the past year. We've learned that modern parking systems are very complex, they require a lot of expertise, they require technical proficiency in understanding networks and cellular network provisioning. They require a mastering of the LUKE machine as well. It's, it's a complex piece of equipment that requires maintenance procedures in order to keep them working at their, at their, at their best. Requires familiarity with the back-office software, like all of the computer programs and network systems. So it, it requires a lot more technical proficiency now. Modern parking systems also are accompanied now with marketing programs. You have different initiatives and different business practices that you can furnish the system to, which you couldn't do with single, traditional meter heads. They could just be coin repositories, more or less. So now you have a different way of approaching it. You need, when I say business centers, you need different business competencies, marketing, IT, revenue generators, how to, how to grow that system, and how to secure that system, and how to build capacity and manage it proactively. And again, business analytics. These are smart computers. These are taking real-time data, giving us different reports, and we're able to understand the demand analysis by reading the data and being proactive with that demand analysis in order to incorporate those reports into future planning. This brings us to samples of outsourced parking management solutions. Some examples of cities that are currently, have existing expanded parking systems already are the city of Birmingham, the city of Royal Oak, the city of Dearborn, the city of Ann Arbor. They all use different parking management systems to help manage their parking assets, to help plan for future strategic planning and expansion. So that brings us to the Phase Two of the system integration and planning. Right now, one of our goals, short-term goals, is to complete the integration of the LUKE Two pay stations into on-street parking. We want to homogenize the system. Right now, we're still maintenance-ing and taking care of, and having different procedures for, for surfacing traditional single-head meters into pay stations. We want to unify those systems, unify those procedures, and unify, unify the maintenance and training for that. Doing so will enhance the customer service ability, but also build our revenue generation ability by, by providing those into on-street positions. While completing the integration, we want to make sure that we refine the existing system. We understand that over the last year, we've learned a lot, and we've, we've made a lot of improvements, but it's a complex system, and, and to get our best out of it, we want to make sure that we refine our customer service, we, we develop a business and patron engagement plan, we continue to assess our kiosk location, making sure that they're in the best position to provide customer service and to generate revenue. We want to improve our signage and information. That is, a really big deal is to make sure you have an appropriate, effective signage and information platform, especially when you make such a giant leap in, in platforms. And to establish preventative maintenance program. We need a proven preventative maintenance program to make sure the system is operating as, as it's intended to. So in December, early December, the Parking Committee, which meets monthly, approved the release of a request for proposals. The city did go out to bid. We released the bid on the Mitten Michigan International Trade Network and online, on another popular purchasing site. Sid, the city reviewed four bids. The top three interviews were selected to be interviewed by the Parking Committee. The finalists included ABM Parking out of Chicago, Illinois, Republic Parking System Chattanooga, Tennessee, and SP Plus Parking System out of Chicago, Illinois. They're also locally known as Central Parking, but they've been rebranded, and they're going to be phasing that up to SP Plus Parking. There's evaluating, evaluation criteria in a really tiny language. So, we'll just move on to the next slide, which really focuses on the, the core focus of the evaluation criteria, which we focused on the facility experience. We needed a parking management company with demonstrated proficiencies in managing and expanding LUKE Two systems. We needed to make sure that they had significant experience in municipal city operations, parking operations. We wanted to make sure that they were experienced with parking expansion. That means experience with demand analysis, experience with parking garage construction and project management, experience with feasibility studies and site selection. We wanted a company that could provide a, a unique and effective customer service solution. We'll talk about all these in a few moments and break them down a little bit. As we've spoken about already, this new modern parking systems do require a certain proficiency in information technology capacity. So that was a, that was a requirement for this parking management company. And again, our cost estimates always play a factor. So the panelists did score quantity evaluation criteria. The top-scoring company was Republic Parking System, followed by ABM and then SP Plus. All proposals were, all proposals were thought to be very competent, and all would have provided a good solution. But the panel was unanimous in this decision that Republic Parking had some points to put them over the edge. Might have lost the battery. Oh, there it is. Okay. A summary of the new program's benefits. So improved customer service. This was written under the RP as a requirement, and we will be having an on-demand dispatch and call center. That means pay stations will be equipped with a phone number that will direct any customer at any time at a 24/7 hour call center, and that person will be, the, the customer will be speaking to a, a live person who can then either help them solve their problem or direct dispatch to, and dispatch will be, dispatch service will be provisioned to an onsite service ambassador. We will have a mystery shopper program. This was required for the performance measurement. We wanted to measure customer service performance and how it's improving or not improving. And we will hold the parking management company to those results. On-site service presence during business hours. So typically, the city has always staffed the parking system Monday through Saturday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30, 4:30 p.m. But our peak hours, and our peak downtown business hours are between 5 o'clock until well past 9 o'clock, but we enforce till 9 o'clock. So it's important for us to have customer service onsite during business peak hours. It is, the auto parking fund is run like a business fund, an enterprise fund, and it's only appropriate to staff your peak business hours. So we felt that appropriate solution to be in place by this company. Customer engagement, they will be speaking, well, they will be onsite, so they'll be our Ferndale parking team, they will be engaging with the business communities and other local organizations, the DDA and the Chamber of Commerce, for instance, and all interested parties, to make sure that the system is working best for them, and, and to inventory improvements where we can. And to implement signage and programming improvements, customer service will grow up significantly once we finalize and improve our downtown signage, some wayfinding with parking, instructional information, informational brochures. Once all this gets refined, I believe that will significantly enhance the experience. We gain management capacity, again, with our business analytics and investment expansion analysis. These are core competencies that the city does not have internally, that we would be leaning on this industry experience, this industry capacity for. And then a reduction in long-term costs, which we'll speak about momentarily. The immediate reduction will be seen in overtime costs related to our responses that we have to have for this system and for issues on over, on the weekends and late at night. That's all overtime costs. Continuing on, our marketing services, I did touch on signage and wayfinding, but also includes web design capacity, graphic design for infographics and other brochures. Long-term budgeting and feasibility analysis, again, is part of the business competencies. And again, functional design, they'll be able to help us inform our decisions as regards to kiosk layout and where those locations are and how they meet demand. If the city should choose to consider garage expansion, they would help with the garage layout and give us analysis of traffic and pedestrian flow. Why this new program? Again, just to summarize, this is a fund that is operated as a business, and as a business, our customer service currently is inadequate, and we take responsibility for that. We don't staff our business during the peak hours. We do not have the capacity or the resources right now to be responsive to everybody, every stakeholder that uses the system. So this program gives us that capability and gives us that capacity. Our experience and resources also aren't where they need to be. We don't have the internal modern systems. We don't have an understanding of the complex IT network infrastructures that are involved in these machine-to-machine technologies. These are not internal competencies that we do have right now. And again, we believe that their ability to help us improve the system and help us improve customer service begets a better bottom line, which begets parking system expansion You know, this is just a review, but again, this is an industry paradigm shift for parking management, as these older antiquated single-head machines are phased out, because they aren't really being, they, they're really no longer being supported anymore from maintenance. So this is, this is the direction that the parking industry will inevitably continue to move toward. So being ahead of the learning curve, we have to have the ability to respond to these So the panelists recommend... So the panelists' recommendation was unanimous. It was Republic Parking System. Members of the panel included most of the members of the Parking Committee that were able to attend. Republic Parking System, this has a Midwest regional hub located in Ann Arbor. This is also their primary IT offices. They do provide local staffing, our local employee staffing base, so we are staffing local Michiganders, and we, they do manage over 750 locations. For us, Republic will offer a couple of key factors. This one is customer service. They will provide a dedicated parking manager, and they will provide investor coverage during the business week, Monday through Saturday, business hours, all business hours will be covered. They will all be cross-trained in maintenance and customer service, so you'll gain a lot of proficiency there. Their command center dispatch is located in Ann Arbor, so it's a local dispatch. It's only 45 minutes away on a good day. As I said, we will focus on getting the customer service number installed on all parking equipment infused into the institutional structure. They will also provide lot maintenance that includes some graffiti removal, some sticker removal, which is featured prominently in few lots. We will have lot pickup and snow abatement services provided for the parking lots, which will also free up some VPW resources to help them be more responsive to some of the other residential street in other areas. Their experience is significant when it comes to parking expansion. They've integrated 82 of these machines, up to 82, I believe, and I'll let them correct me if I'm wrong, in Ann Arbor since 2007, I believe, so they've had several years of experience implementing these and perfecting these systems as far as the integration and expansion of the systems. They have extensive experience in garage construction, including project management. They have significant experience in project finance, cash flow analysis, and understanding what debt service obligations you can expect when you look at a parking system expansion and what revenues you need to support that expansion. I'll let them speak in more detail if there's questions on that. The third key factor was the IT extension services with their office located in Ann Arbor. They do have enterprise network solution experience, including how to configure and administer networks, how to make sure that workstation defense is secure. Right now, our software is managed in the back office, so you want to make sure that everything is secured and in place for that. They do offer certain light project management experience. They bring a lot of security management experience and security project experience to the table. They've implemented a very effective intelligent lock security system called the AC-Abloy system with some of their other clients that the city might be interested in. They familiar with installing service surveillance systems, intercom systems, and actually demonstrated their mobile command and dispatch center during the interview, which was a plus. They did help us in our original cellular network analysis that was conducted last July when we were having some modem connectivity issues. They were able to quickly assess our network and discover the issue that was causing connectivity problems, and then recommended a modem switch and a cellular service platform switch, and the problem was solved, and we have 99.8% uptime right now. And again, they are experienced and have capacity for web development and mobile apps should the city want to develop a parking, dedicated parking website or explore parking e-commerce potentially. And long-term system cost reduction possibility. Currently, the city's annual personnel costs associated with the auto parking fund equal approximately $224,000, $225,000 in personnel costs. Should the city determine that it makes sense to consider expanding Republic's role into our parking services, a straight personnel cost comparison, Republic estimates it at $171,000. This results in a personnel savings of $52,000 annually in personnel costs related to the auto parking fund. And again, our current costs cover management, enforcement, and collections. We don't have an existing customer service program. This would cover that customer service program, the business proficiencies, management enforcement, and collections. Immediate action, we do want to see some results within the first 60 days, and we believe this new capacity will enable us to do so. There are planned introductions to the business community, the DDA, the Chamber of Commerce, and other boards of interest. We would like to inventory those observations and incorporate them into a strategic plan that we can effectively implement in the first early days. I want to, as I've said vehemently, I want to make sure that we refine our signage package and make sure that that is launched by the spring season. And again, come up with a strategic integration plan for Luke's spring and summer, and that means a demand analysis really quick of our current demand of on-street and off-street Future parking demand after these initial, short-term, I'm calling them some triage issues that I'd like to clear up, we would like to look at the parking demand analysis and get an understanding from their perspective and their reports, what our financial position is as it relates to the city's plans for any system expansion. Now, Republic Parking is attendance, and I would like to offer a city council and mayor an opportunity to meet them and to ask any questions of them or myself.
Great. Why don't you introduce them?
This is Art Low. Let him introduce his title.
I'm the district manager for Republic Parking.
Good to see you, Art.
Stephen Smith. I'll, you all introduce your titles.
Sure. I'm the IT manager for the Michigan region.
Excellent.
And this is Stacy Meitzner, the proposed Ferndale Director.
So already introduced yourselves.
So, that one I knew. That one I knew.
All right. Questions of council?
Sure, I'll start with, thanks for coming today, by the way. Appreciate you being here. But the existing staff that is engaged in enforcement, what happens with them if we accept the proposal?
This proposal right now has enforcement and collections internal, to be stepped internally still.
So we retain them?
Correct. Right now, as the systems...
To clarify, we asked them to provide like an alternative, if you will. So right now, we're just proposing them to be the managers, and as we move forward, if we want to include them in collections, then, or enforcement, we can, and that is the total up there. So it's there if we want it, but right now, we're keeping our enforcement as it is until we've had a chance to get them onboard, sit down with our staff, and figure out how we want to do enforcement and collections. So those options are there, which was that total, but right now, we're just engaging them in the initial management.
Operations and management.
So that personnel savings isn't there out of the gate?
Not yet, no.
No.
So the enforcement of the RPZ remains unchanged, or does that fall under Republic's purview as well?
The RPZ program actually would be a consideration of one of our future investment opportunities with them that is heavily reliant on some of their parking enforcement solutions and recommendations that they might have based on their past experiences of incorporating RPZ programs.
Okay, two more, I'm sorry, and then I'll be done. The, so you placed a high priority on refining the signage package that's out there. So are we going to ensure that there's effort and consistency in the signage with the existing wayfinding style and patterns that are out there? And I guess a secondary question, so that means I have three. Where, do we feel that's, how inadequate do we feel that is today? Because I'm kind of surprised to hear that we have an issue with signage.
Security is very inadequate.
Security, but signage?
Signage has been getting stolen since the system was implemented.
Oh, security.
So when you're looking at repackaging signage, you're looking at...
Not the design.
Securing, not the actual graphic design.
All right.
But it's about making sure we have the right instructional information out there, that we provide signage information appropriately with regards to wayfinding. I'm speaking of a map. Right now, there's no "I'm here" parking map signage out there. So right now, we'd like to incorporate parking map signage into the parking lots. We'd like to incorporate instructional signage into the parking lots and definitely establish a more secure, consistent way to actually manage the space signage.
Okay, all right, that makes more sense to me, thanks. And then lastly, the, you mentioned that in the works would be to conduct a demand analysis, or has that already been done, or is that planned activity?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
You mentioned a demand analysis, a parking demand analysis in your presentation?
Yeah, a demand analysis based on actual traffic and observed traffic of our system existing now, and how that might project and how that will project once we...
Right, oh, yeah, I understand what it is. When was the last time we did one? It doesn't seem like it's been that long.
Well, the system is continuing to change, but there was an analysis that was done in the fall. We'll continue to do one in the spring, but the demand analysis is going to change depending on where we actually relocate the kiosks. It's going to be able to spread, I believe, some more of the traffic congestion out.
So relocating the kiosks, wouldn't that be in response to a demand analysis? Does, I mean, isn't it kind of a chicken or egg thing, or am I missing something? I'm sorry.
I think it could be a little bit reactive and proactive.
A little bit what?
It could be a little bit reactive and proactive. So you're being proactive because you're able to respond to the data, but in a way, I mean, it's also reactive in a way because we never had the data to respond to. But right now, we have never, we haven't incorporated those machines to our highest demand areas, which is the on-street parking.
Right.
So once we do that, that's going to change the game, and you're going to need to relook at traffic patterns.
Okay.
Plus, looking, we've been looking at line management for the last year as well. We did make some quick changes, but we also want to take a look at some particular areas that the lines are still a little bit, we want to take a look at the appropriate lines for that kind of thing, so.
May I have a follow-up question, building off of yours?
Sure, I'm good, thank you.
Oh my God, I just lost my train of thought. Let me come back to it.
Sure. Any other questions?
I do. Does the, does this agreement include the individual coin meters that currently exist on Nine Mile? So it's all meters?
They will be operating and managing the parking system, yes.
Okay. I need infrastructure. I just want to make sure. Now, with the agreement, does council give up the right to, there's a number of people that are afraid that the Nine Mile and Woodward meter, individual meters are going away. Does that give Republic or any other company the right to just decide what meters are going to stay, which meter, individual meters are going to go?
No, they're an agent of the city. The city manager's office manages the contract, and infrastructure decisions will continue to be dialogued through the Parking Committee.
We still have to come to council for approval for all of that stuff.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yep.
My thoughts popped back in my brain. Did you do demand analysis or type of demand analysis when you came up with the 30-minute shopping parking spots? I mean, is that sort of how you used that data to come up with that program?
Yes, actually, that was part of the contractual arrangement, temporary contractual arrangement with Republic last year, was part of the analytical and advisory. So we did ask them, we informed them we were interested in the program. They actually observed some traffic and had made that recommendation of those positions to be acting as the pilot shopping zone positions.
And how long is that pilot program going on for? When will we start seeing some results? And will that be part of your, right, is it working? Is the pilot program working? What are the results of...
We've heard, well, we've heard a range of positive and, of course, a range of negative. The negative is from people who ignore the signage. Positive is from people who have told me that they've benefited from having a spot open to go and pick up their, pick up from Bangkok Express, I think. I can't remember, one of the Nine Mile restaurants. But the goal for us was to position them equidiscently throughout the downtown, to offer opportunities to all the businesses, including the retailers and the downtown pickup. Now, in partnership with the Parking Management Company, they continue to help me manage and improve that program. I will begin, I look forward to reassessing that in March and April. But I would also like to give that program an opportunity to run during the spring weather too and see if behavior changes or if opportunities change.
And we've had some internal issues with that program as well, like our sign machine broke, so we wanted to change the signage, and people were really creative in how to get out of parking there and be able to park there for three hours. So we were able to change, we were finally able to change the data in the machine to make it so you actually, when you go in to pay, it doesn't let you. So we had a lot of internal issues with that too, so we're still trying to work through that, but I think generally, I think it has definite positives to it, but we need to refine it, just like, again, as we do all of our programs.
We did...
Which is what Republic Parking is going to help us with.
And the magistrate did forgive those tickets, and that was an example of where I was inefficient in IT, as I did not, I did not coordinate the software to not accept payment for those spaces during registered hours. But unfortunately, we had to learn to be, and we did respond, and we did make the corrections, so.
Well, I'm getting, Joe, on those 20-minute parking designated spots, that if somebody wants to put, stay there for two hours and put the adequate amount of money into the meter, they don't know whether or not they can. The signage is not explicit enough.
Correct.
That's what we just fixed. They, it won't accept payment anymore.
It will not.
During posted hours, no.
Okay.
Dan?
I don't, I'm looking, I don't see anywhere where it stipulates how long this contract is for.
That's still to be determined, but the preliminary proposal was three years. That's the standard agreement. And we are still having that contract being reviewed by the city attorney, so it's pending the approval of the city attorney.
Does that mean the contract will be coming back to us for final approval?
What we would prefer is that with approval of the city manager, with the approval of the city attorney through the city manager, so that we can move forward, but if they want to bring it back, we can.
I think that's the language I intended. I apologize if I didn't...
Mayor?
Articulate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, my concern is, with the recommendation, is that it doesn't have a price tag to it. So I'm not comfortable today, you know, making a motion or voting on a motion without some price stating this is what it's going to cost us, even if it's a per year, if it's changed to two-years agreement.
The standard, the bid agreement was for $118,000 for the annually.
That's what I, so we, that is, that's the annual rate that we're talking about, right? So we do have that.
Okay, see, I didn't see it in the motion, the recommendation.
It didn't get put in the motion.
Okay.
But it should.
Okay.
You're right, you pointed out, and it should be included in the motion.
118 is the amount. Okay.
Per year for three years with no increase.
Uh, no, we'll, we'll bring it back. We'll have to get that figured out for you guys.
Okay. But, good point. Talk a little bit more about the ambassadors, what they do, how they work, how long they'll be involved, if that's for the entire length of the contract, or once they've educated that work is done. Talk a little bit more about that.
Our proposal included Stacy and two hourly employees, and we patterned it around the existing operational plan that you currently have in the city. So basically, they would be on property from about 10:30 in the morning until 9:00 at night, somewhere in that area, and that's a discretion, so we have a lot of flexibility. I think you really can equate the ambassadors in two parts, basically. One is the interpersonal engagement part, where we're actually going out assisting people, we're talking to people, finding out what their needs are, you know, trying to identify. And I think the other one is the more tangible, quite frankly, but it's still ambassadors, still customer service, is the snow abatement, keeping the machines clean, the preventative maintenance issues. And one of the issues that Joe touched upon was the fact that during the winter basis, when we had some ambassadors over here from Republic, we actually cut down the number of alarms that were instituted by almost 70%. And that's little PM stuff, preventative maintenance-related issues that are done, you know, the nuances of cleaning out coin acceptors, bill acceptors, things like that nature. That's a part of the ambassador program too. So we look at it in that context. I guess maybe there's three points too. The other point is actually going out and reaching out to the community, the stakeholders, finding those folks that have an interest in there, trying to, with city staff, you know, support and approval and guidance to find a way to make the process that much more inclusive of the neighborhoods, not only the businesses, but also the residents too.
But that's going to be my second point, but before I get to that, so I'm just trying to be clear. So the ambassadors operate for, this isn't an initial education piece like we did when we rolled out. This is something that they'll be for the life of the contract, and they'll be a permanent part of our downtown system, is having the ambassadors.
What we found with the Luks is, or I should say pan-foot technology, is obviously there's many different challenges you have. One is technology aversion. You have folks that are afraid of the machines, are intimidated, don't like them, you know, maybe there are a few more steps and processes involved, but I think that's really where the key element comes in with the ambassadors, is actually physically walking them through. For example, and I'll use Ann Arbor because that's one of our biggest projects that we've done over the years, is Stephen Smith, who's the IT manager, was very instrumental in this, but he basically, we rolled out, you know, onesies and twosies, if you will, as far as machines, and we flooded that area with ambassadors. Now, this is a little bit different because we're going to have the ambassadors floating around, but I think the layered response is what's also important too, as Joe alluded to with the command center. All the kiosks or all the machines will have a number, so if someone wants to call in for assistance, they can do that. Our employees know how to work these machines, the call center folks. We look for a specific type of person in those roles and in Stacy's roles. They have customer service experience in retail, maybe in educational areas and things of that nature. So I think it all complements each other.
But I think it's a wonderful benefit to this program, and we certainly found that kind of a person helpful... kind of a person helpful when we rolled it out, but, but I think going forward, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a great feature, uh, so thank you for the explanation. So, talking about the communication a little bit, how do you, I do think the engagement with the business owners and the residents and the users is very important, and I noticed that's in the 60-day, you know, right-away stuff that we're going to do. So how, how do you envision that rolling out? I, I see Mike Hennessy from our DDA, so I'm guessing, because they're experts at communicating to business owners, they'll be involved in that, but how do you, how do you, um, envision that kind of communication happening?
Well, you know, basically, I look at it from a couple of standpoints. One is physically actually going out to different organizations, the stakeholders, you know, merchants associations, DDA, city staff. Uh, yeah, quite frankly, another thing is cold calling, knocking on doors, going in and seeing a business. That's what Stacy's going to do. She's got the personality for that, she's got the skill sets for that, she's interactive, she's going to go in and see. You know, we can't be everything to everybody, but certainly we can take the time to listen and talk and see what's going on within the organization, within the parking system. That's important. You know, let's face it, no one likes to have paid parking, no one wants to pay for paid parking. Uh, I've been doing this for quite some time. How you minimize that, uh, I said, perception or, or hangup, if you will, is how well you go about approaching, you know, the different stakeholders and users of the system.
It, but you, I guess, do you have a, um, a sort of a, a, a town hall kind of gathering meeting where you would, you, you might invite the business owners to come and hear a presentation? Is that, do you envision that?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
And I think, you know, certainly with city staff and DDA, that'd be ideal, since those groups are all very much a part of the business community in the core.
That would be helpful.
No question. You know, we, we will do things, too, from a customer service standpoint, uh, hot times of the year, we'll have small bottled waters that we'll hand out to customers as they come and go from the lots. You know, those are little amenities, but it certainly says something that we're, we're really trying to look into the system a little bit more than maybe, uh, would be otherwise.
Thank you.
I have one more follow-up. You mentioned, um, I appreciate your emphasis on customer service, and you've mentioned your inbound call center a couple of times. What's, um, performance metrics do you manage the call center to, and are those service agree, level agreements in our contract?
Currently, we don't have any metrics, uh, available, but, uh, I can tell you that our staff, let me explain to you who staffs our call center. We have what are called shift coordinators, and they are staffed out of our Ann Arbor office, uh, 24/6. So it would actually mirror the same hours of operations currently within the system here in Ferndale. With that said, we are closed on Sundays in Ann Arbor. Again, if that was to change in Ferndale, we could accommodate that change also. But basically, what we like to try to do is to keep those rings, uh, on the phone, cell phones, down to three or four, uh, we, uh, three or four dials, so we're able to actually answer the call and deal with an issue.
So you don't have a queuing system, or they, you measure your average speed to answer, or?
Well, you know, actually, I'm going to let Stephen Smith mark that.
Sorry, I don't know.
No, no, no.
Because I'm not waiting to have a call center, and somebody waits, right? I mean, you don't want to.
That's correct. And I'm going to let Stephen talk a little bit about that, because he's got a brand-new call system or phone system that he just installed.
Sure, so we have, uh, two different types of VoIP technology. Um, one is, is from a Michigan company, Barracuda Networks. Uh, it, it works just like you would imagine a, a PBX phone system would work. It certainly queues people up. Um, we have in our command center, and I wish I had my presentation here, but essentially, three different, three different stations, um, within that little call area. So up to three different managers can respond to both VoIP systems at the same time. So the second VoIP system is by a company out of Europe called Command Intercom, and these intercom buttons can be placed within any kiosk. They unfortunately can't go in the Loop station yet because those are solar-powered, and there's, uh, some power requirement problems, uh, with running a, basically a network device over a very, very little power, a very small battery. So, um, but what we, we do have is a direct inward dial number that's going to hit our, our command center and ring, it rings, I think, about 12 different phones at once, on two different levels of that, of that command center. So it, it, it's definitely, uh, someone will respond, and if they don't, uh, it, it goes to cell phones after that. So, yeah, absolutely does queue.
So it's more like a hunt group than a call center, right? You're not queuing the calls, they're going from phone to phone?
Well, they're, they're hitting all the phones at once, and then they're queuing in, in behind those, those phones, yeah.
Thank you.
It's both a hunt group and.
Other questions? Probably need a motion at this point.
Um, I'd like to propose an alternative motion in what's in the packet. I'd like to move that we pursue the agreement between City of Ferndale and Republic Parking for Management Services, pending approval from the city attorney for an annual fee, and withdrawn from the auto parking fund, and pending final approval of city council with the details of the contract. Um, you have to be filled.
I support that.
Is that sufficient?
Yes, do you want to go back for the next meeting?
Uh, yes, I'd like to, I, I definitely sit in need, I don't want to delay, but I would, I think we'll get back next meeting.
We, we meant to put the terms in, and it just got missed, so that's perfectly.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. All right. Other, other comments, questions, or discussion on this item?
Um, I have a comment before we vote. Um, I know a lot of people don't like the new system, but the reality is, you can't find parts for a Model T. And, I'll be honest, I'm not really fond of, of the, the big systems either. I actually use the mobile app. Um, to me, it's more convenient, but this is the way of the future, and, um, we don't have, you know, cities don't have the knowledge and experience of running parking systems, you know, other than the old antiquated, you know, put a coin in and turn the key to collect it. Um, so, I, I, I think this is the route to go. Uh, with a 52,000-plus-year savings, I don't see what the, uh, I'm sorry?
Sorry, no, there is not a 52,000-hour savings.
There will be.
Not initially, you are correct. You are correct. Down the road, eventually, we should see a savings.
That's correct.
My final comment is that cities are generally moving away from processing to doing customer service, and this is all across every service that cities are providing. And I think, um, adding on, uh, a stellar customer service program, um, is critical to, um, attracting new people to come in in our downtown and the adoption of using these new pay systems. Um, and I, so, you know, it makes sense for me, um, from my point of view, to continue on our relationship with Republic Parking, um, because we have been under contract with them, um, uh, for the past couple of months. So, um, I think they understand our needs and where we're going. Um, but this is also is an ongoing, continuing evolution of our parking system. Um, we still need to address our parking capacity issues, um, not just manage our parking, what we have now, and so I think this sets us up as the next step of, of getting there. Um, and of course, we still have to address rates, um, because that's part of the conversation, too, down the road, because we delayed that over a year ago, right? And so that's still on delay, so, but we're going to have to have that conversation, too. And I think Republic Parking will be able to help us walk through, um, those conversations with the business community, um, at large, so I'm very supportive of this contract. Uh, once all the provisions have been met.
Actually, I do have another question, and I think, I think someone touched on it. Snow removal in the parking lots would be handled by Republic?
It's the snow abatement.
Abate, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So.
Of the machines, the signage, yes.
Gotcha.
They're not removing, they're not shoveling the actual pavement.
No, but there is, again, part of the contract as we expand, which we would come back to council for. I mean, this is for the initial 118, but as we start looking at that and working with staff to see where our priorities are, that there is potential that they can do that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I would, I would just add that, you know, Joe, you mentioned a couple of po, a couple of points in the presentation about what our staff doesn't have the capacity to do, and certainly Republic brings a lot of expertise to the table. But I have personally been amazed at times with how much we were able to, um, manage the system internally, and a lot of that is, uh, thanks to you, and I look, and you weren't hired to be a parking manager, and so you took on a, a job that was not, uh, in your job description when you came, and you've done a very admirable job. Uh, it's, it wasn't fair of you to expect that you could do all of this stuff, that entire companies do what you've been doing. So, uh, I look forward to when you can do a lot less parking and you can go back to doing the work that we originally hired you to do, uh, because I know that'll be great as well. So thanks for all your effort. Uh, Sharon, will you call it all, please?
Council members, Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. Item is adopted. Uh, moving on to the regular agenda, item D is the consideration to move Royal Oak Township Public Safety Answering Point from Oakland County to Ferndale. Uh, Chief, are you going to introduce that item?
Yes, I'm going to have Chief Collins come up and give a more detailed report.
Yeah, Chief Collins, you want to introduce that? Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Mayor Council.
Um, briefly, what this is all about is that, um, years ago, uh, Oakland County and the state of Michigan made every community that had a public safety answering point, uh, a PSAP, declare which, uh, city would be answering their 911 calls. Uh, in most cases, that is the city of themselves, or Royal Oak would have Royal Oak, Ferndale would have Ferndale. Um, during that time, we also had to designate which, um, towers that the cellular 911 phone calls would be coming to each, if, each different PSAP. We in Ferndale decided to take everything that points to us. So we have historically been grabbing, uh, North Detroit calls on our border, South Royal Oak calls on our border, uh, West Hazel Park calls on our border, uh, East Oak Park calls on our border, and Royal Oak Township calls that, uh, touch us, because we have, we have every one of those, uh, towers that face us. We are, we are the only ones that get that. So we are very familiar with transferring 911 calls to other PSAPs, uh, and we did that just to ensure that we get all of our 911 calls, and we've been very successful at that. And as you well know, uh, Royal Oak Township is now in a state of financial, uh, distress. Uh, I don't know if an EM is in their future, but if it isn't, it will be, uh, something along that line, will be either a, a plan or a, or an EM. Uh, Royal Oak Township has not paid, uh, Oakland County Sheriff's Department, who is their current PSAP, and they did contract for some of their police services from Oakland County Sheriff's Department. They, uh.
But, just to be clear, they didn't owe, they didn't, it wasn't that they didn't pay them for PSAP, because you don't pay for that, right? They didn't pay them for the.
Well, technically, Oakland County does charge for dispatch services, but it was part of, it was kind of an anomaly, they were getting that for free. Most other agencies that, uh, provide, uh, 911 dispatch service, uh, at the county level, uh, do pay a separate fee for that. If we had wanted to give up our PSAP and have Oakland County do, uh, dispatch for us, we would pay a fee, uh, and it actually is quite expensive. Uh, so that was something that Royal Oak Township was getting for free, uh, from, uh, the county that I guess most people don't speak of.
Okay.
Um, as we know, the Oakland County has terminated their, uh, police services completely with, uh, Royal Oak Township, and the Michigan State Police have tentatively taken over patrol services for Royal Oak Township, um, providing 24/7, 365-day service there. Also, all the 911 calls, wireless and hardwired, most of them are wireless, 911 calls are being handled by Oakland County. So essentially, Oakland County, the, if you call 911 in, um, uh, Royal Oak Township, that call is going to go to Oakland County's, uh, dispatch center, and now Oakland County, because they don't provide any of those services, they're going to forward fire calls to us, ambulance calls are going to send to, uh, community ambulance, and police services call are going, going down to the Detroit, uh, Post, uh, downtown, which is not a PSAP. They don't have the equipment to have all the, uh, uh, location information called ANI Alley Information Automatic Location Index. That information doesn't go to Detroit, so it's really not the best case, but that's the way that it is right now. Um, in communication with Oakland County and with the Michigan State Police, uh, we kind of volunteered, basically, to say, hey, we will become the 911, uh, call-taking, we're not doing dispatch, uh, per se, for anyone, but we would be the receptor of all the 91, all of the 911 calls for, uh, Royal Oak Township, and then, because we are providing fire services to Royal Oak Township, we can directly dispatch fire services from our PSAP, much more efficient than three phone calls to get a fire truck into Royal Oak Township. Uh, we will also take on the responsibility of forwarding those, all of those, uh, uh, police service calls and the calls for ambulance to the Detroit, um, uh, call center, uh, is what the state police has requested, uh, the process to be. We are not going to make any, um, there are no funds available, at least not at this time, for us to do that. We kind of stepped up to the plate because we felt it was best for the citizens of, uh, Royal Oak Township, where, where, uh, we know how many calls that will be. We believe we can do it without adding personnel or any, uh, undue stress onto our system. And, um, uh, in order for that to happen, because only Royal Oak Township can request that somebody ate, somebody else take over their PSAP, they have done so at their last board meeting last, uh, uh, late last month, and, uh, the next step would be, if we go forward, is for this council to, uh, say, yes, you'll take, we will take on that responsibility, and then we would have to notify, uh, Oakland County that that is, uh, what would happen. So at this time, we, we are requesting to take over the 911, uh, uh, PSAP services for Royal Oak Township.
And, Your Honor, through the chair, uh, the, the statute that authorizes that, allows for that to take place, uh, through an agreement, a, uh, interlocal agreement between Royal Oak Township and, uh, the city, and, and that's what's before you this evening, is approval of that agreement.
Gotcha.
And, and the agreement does provide that the city can terminate such services upon 60 days' notice to the township, consistent with the statute.
Questions?
Yes, um, can you give a ballpark of how many calls we're talking about on a monthly average?
Uh, we, we did a yearly number, um, I can't really tell you what a monthly average is, and I'm sure, I'm sure that fluctuates somewhat, but it's about 20, 2,400 calls in a year.
That includes police and fire.
That's all, that concludes medical as well.
That's probably not that bad, too.
No.
That's not bad at all. Well, and.
And, and primarily, uh, most of the calls are, are for medical and, uh, fire services.
In regards to police calls that you'll be forwarding on, um, from time to time, our police department does assist, um, uh, the state police within Royal Oak in, in providing assistance. Am I correct?
Yes. Royal Oak Township, when, when this all began, uh, we wanted to be, uh, very upfront with anybody, uh, any one of the three agencies, Oak Park, uh, MSP, and Oakland County, that, um, we do not want to become the de facto police department of Royal Oak Township, but certainly if any law enforcement agency calls for assistance, that we will be the first to respond. Um, so this actually does give us a leg up on that, because we will know before, uh, MSP does, when, whether there's going to be a car sent someplace. Unfortunately, we're not on the same radio system, although that may change shortly, but at this point, it's an entirely different, uh, 800 megahertz system, so we will be forwarding those, uh, calls to, um, MSP, and MSP will be dispatching their units, uh, independently of us, so we won't hear them on the radio, per se, but we'll know that they've already called for the police because we sent them the call.
Thank you. Well, and ju, I guess, so just to reiterate, I mean, I, I think it's, uh, given, given the, the, the financial condition of Royal Oak Township and the fact that they're our neighbors and we, and we, you know, we, we value them as neighbors, uh, but our responsibility neighbors and we, and we, you know, we, we value them as neighbors, uh, but our responsibility is not to, to financially support their services there, obviously. And so, in your, your estimation, there, there's no additional cost to Ferndale to do this?
No, I, and at this point in time, I see, I see no downside financially for us. It's nowhere, more wear and tear on our equipment. Um, the personnel that we currently have will be able to handle the call load. Um, the efficiencies that we will enjoy from it at the fire level, I think, will far outweigh any type of, uh, complaining that my dispatchers may do over the situation. But, uh, but realistically, we're not talking about an overly large amount of calls, and this very well may save, uh, save lives, uh, in the long run.
Thanks, Chief. Now, motion would be in order.
I'd move that council approve the Ferndale Police Department to be the public safety answering point provider for Royal Oak Township. Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Polica. Any other comments, questions?
Just adding, and friendly amendment, so possibly of authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement.
I would like to add, then, we also authorize the mayor and clerk to execute.
Good catch, Dan, thank you. Any, any final comments or questions on this item?
Well, it is late, and I'll say, I'm more worried about the long-term health of the, the public safety, and while I appreciate Ferndale stepping in and providing a helping hand to our, to our neighbors, um, the problems that they're experiencing, the state-created trouble, and they need to help us solve it with that, with Royal Oak Township. I mean, um, I'm very, very concerned there, considering, you know, the opening sentence here of this memo is, uh, the police, the state police providing police services is not a long-term solution, and they had Oakland County, and they left, so who is left? Um, it, you know, not a lot of choices. My late-night commentary.
All right. Uh, Cheryl Lynn, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Chief. Uh, the last regular agenda item is E, consideration to amend council rules of procedure regarding meeting start time. This one, we've had a couple times before. At our last meeting, um, we gave notice that at this meeting, we would consider moving our council meeting starting time until 7:00 PM. Uh, that is what it, so that was noticed at the last meeting, and it is now before council. So, um, a motion would be in order.
I'll move that we adopt Amendment 6 to council's rules of procedure to read regular and special meetings, all regular meetings, and the council shall be held second and fourth Monday of the month in the council chambers at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. If the meeting day falls on a legal holiday, the council shall meet on the next regular business day.
Second.
Moved by Martin and supported by Lennon. Is there a discussion on this item?
I'm just going to reiterate what I said last time, and my first time that this came to council, is that, um, the evidence for me to change the time, um, didn't warrant a, a change in time, um, but I appreciate the efforts, um, that have been made, um, and while 6:30, 7 o'clock is better than 6:30, I'm sticking to my original, uh, position. Just to let you know.
All right. Uh, Cheryl Lynn, do you wanna call the role, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
No.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. And that, so that, just to be clear, that means our next regularly scheduled meeting, and I believe that's February 24th, will start at 7:00 PM. All right, that concludes the regular agenda. Um, moving on now to call to council. Uh, please, Chief Collins, anything else for the good of the city, sir?
Something else around, rather than, I want to let you know that "munkery" is a real word. I like that.
Really? All right. All right, if you say so. I'm gonna check it, you know. Uh, Chief Sullivan, anything for the fire department this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, I'd like you to know the fire department's been busy lately. Uh, I'd like the citizens to know that we had a fire on, uh, the 400 block of Saratoga last Sunday, and, uh, had recently had a housing inspector visit, who ordered a smoke detector placed in a place they did not have one between the upper and lower flat. That smoke detector inevitably saved the man sleeping in the upper flat's life, waking the guy in the lower flat, who ran upstairs banging on the door. I guess he had, had been partying, so he'd had a few to drink, and got him out of there. The fire went through the roof and pretty much destroyed the whole upper floor of the house, so it was a, uh, testimonial to the fact that codes followed and, and things done are there to protect people, and it worked. And then, we have fought several fires, uh, over this last weekend, um, in other communities. We've ended up in Southfield backing them up while they were fighting a fire there, which I believe ended up as a fatality. And then, we've had, uh, two in Hazel Park over the weekend, one at Carol's Car Wash burned up on Saturday, and then, a house fire on, uh, last night, on Sunday, which, uh, rekindled in the wee hours of the morning, meaning it started back up again, pretty much destroying the whole house there, so. Uh, a lot of activity, but not in the fair city of Ferndale.
I got one question for the chief while he's up there, is how are we doing on certification for the DFIBs? Is everybody up to date, up to speed?
I believe, um, due to CDS, they wanted to alternate schedules, so we haven't done them in Derek's department yet, but everyone else has been done.
Community center.
Uh, community center, I don't know what the schedule is for that. That might not have been done yet either.
Okay.
But I know everybody in City Hall already did the AED and CPR with, uh, Captain Toyler, Youngest Coordinator.
I trust he'll be on top of that.
Yep, we're watching it. Just scheduling where we can fit it in between all the other city business.
Oh, yeah.
All righty.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, Joe, anything else from Chief Information Officer this evening? All right. Uh, April, anything from the city manager's office?
Just a few housekeeping. Uh, just a friendly reminder, uh, Monday, February 17th, we, the city hall is closed for President's Day, so those that are coming in to, um, pay any bills, please note that we are closed on Monday. Uh, just a friendly reminder to city council and to the residents that we do have goal-setting rescheduled for March 3rd, from 5:30 to 9:30 in the Kulik Center. This is due to the, um, cancellation of last week from the weather. So, again, that is March 3rd at the Kulik Center from 5:30 to 9:30, and the public is welcome and encouraged to attend. Um, and lastly, is, um, the, I think this is the first year, but there is a state of the school district being held on Wednesday, um, February 12th at the local kitchen and bar. Um, I believe you can go on the chamber's website to sign up for anybody who is interested to attend them. That is from 5:30 to, I believe, 8:30. Again, that is Wednesday, February 12th, state of the school district. Um, so, I just, there's been a couple of articles in the paper about Royal Oak Township, and I just thought I would comment that they remain current as it relates to our fire service. Um, they've been very diligent about making sure that we are paid, so we are, I think, uh, there was an article that said that they are behind, and that is not the case. And, um, I know, um, plain phone tag with the state, but we are working very closely with them to partner with Royal Oak Township in any way we can, because they are a valued member of our community, and we want to continue to help support them as they go through this time, so, uh, we have been, uh, we will continue to work with them and partner in any way that we can. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that, 'cause there was an article that did state that they are not current, but they are, and they've been very, very diligent about that.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Dan, anything else from the legal perspective? No? All right. Uh, Mayor Pro-Tam Martin, anything?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Lennon?
I also have nothing. I'd like to see Joe, see Joe's presentation afterwards again on the parking lot. I had to get that in, Joe. I'm gonna ask, uh...
I've got nothing here on this one.
Wow, see, I keep forgetting to look this way. Cheryl Lynn, I'm so sorry. Anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Really? Wow, all right. My apologies. Uh, Councilman Polica?
Um, I actually had a nice, long list, but given the hour, I'm gonna cut that down. Um, this Wednesday, uh, the 12th, at 7:00 PM, the Ferndale Public Library is hosting the event Community Conversations: What's Your Agenda for Michigan in 2014 and Beyond? Uh, this event is actually taking place across all, uh, across the state. Um, information will be compiled and given to government officials elected in November. Uh, topics include how you feel about Michigan today, education, economy and prosperity, uh, quality of life, and public money priorities. Uh, to learn more about this event, go to thecenterformichigan.net. Um, because it's this Wednesday, I have a Ferndale Community Foundation meeting, so I will not be able to attend, but I really wanted to go. Parks and Rec, uh, we've had a couple of people express interest in the Parks and Rec, uh, Advisory Board, and our first meeting will be on Wednesday, February 19th, at 6:30 PM at the Kulik Center. That is the scheduled standard meeting time for, uh, that board. Um, currently, there are not enough members for a quorum, uh, so we will just be discussing ideas. Um, if you are interested, please come and see what we're about. Um, if you are interested in being on the commission, uh, we'll have one meeting, an hour a month, and maximum two to three hours of dedicated time, um, if, uh, if you have a passion for the parks. And I'm gonna end it with that.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah, I have two updates. Um, one, I wanted to inform, um, council about the progress we're making on the Environmental Sustainability Commission. Um, it's been, I don't know what, eight, nine months since we approved the revised ordinance and, um, refocused the, the commission to, um, be more supportive of policy goals, um, for the city, but also helping set those policy goals. And, um, where we are now is that, uh, we looked at, um, some energy audits of municipal buildings, and they gave feedback and guidance on, um, what to tackle, uh, um, and priorities, and we're looking, of course, at LED lights and, and changing those out in buildings and, and other areas. Um, we're also, uh, gonna be looking at the, um, Michigan Green Communities, um, program, which is run by Michigan Municipal League. Two years ago, Dan and I, I think it's been two years now, two years ago, we, Dan and I, um, represented the city of Ferndale, um, at the first conference, and, um, Ferndale was awarded a bronze level out of, um, silver and gold. And so, the FSD would like to look at how do we get the city moved from bronze to, um, what's next? Silver. Silver, sorry, oh my God, it's late. Um, and so, looking at the low-hanging fruit to achieve silver. And they are also gonna be looking at the energy and sustainability goals that pertain to the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission, and looking at, um, ways to recommend to council as part of our little mini-goal session what we should update, um, as part of, uh, our long-term green goals. So, and then, um, I wanted to let you know that I'm interested in attending the, um, annual Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference. It's their mini-conference, um, and it's March 18th through the 19th. It's very good, if you're new on council, um, to come along, um, but it does require taking off of, off of work. Um, and so, um, if you can put, uh, on the next city council agenda, um, anybody who wants to attend, we can approve that expenditure. So, let April know if you wanna go, or Cheryl Lynn.
Excellent. All right. Uh, is that it?
Yes.
All right. Uh, just a couple of quick things from me. Number one, uh, last night, uh, Councilman Polica and I had the privilege of being at the Ferndale High School at the PTA's Annual Founder's Day Dinner, and they did such an excellent job.